Before we get underway with our meeting, I'd ask everyone to stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, again, I'd like to welcome you to the March meeting, which also includes the February meeting of the Arondacoit Zoning Board of Appeals. And before we get underway, there's a few things I'd like to take care of. First off, the fire exit is located to your left. In the event of a fire, you will be notified. If notified, please move in a calm and orderly manner and use either the north or the south exits from the building. Do not use the elevator. The meetings are being recorded by our Secretary Michelle for the purpose of a record, not a verbatim transcript, and for purposes so she can make our minutes. So it's important that, in order for the minutes to reflect who's speaking, when you come to the microphone, and in the case of the applicant who might be coming more than once, each time you come to the microphone, please identify yourself by name and address. And when you come to the microphone, please speak into it so everyone can hear you. We follow the items in the order that they appear on our agenda. There are extra copies of the agenda at the table next to the door. Once the case has been called, the applicant will step forward, or their representative, identify themselves with their name and their record, pause for a moment to be sworn, and then present their case. During the presentation of the applicant's case, the members of the board are free to ask questions or to engage in discussions with the applicant or their representative. Once that process has been concluded, we will then have public input, which falls into -- so far, we've identified three categories. We're open to other categories if anyone suggests one. First category, that will be allowed to speak, and during the public input portion, each person only has one opportunity to speak. We first take those who wish to speak in favor of the application. After that has been concluded, we then hear from those who wish to speak in opposition to the application. Once that has been concluded, we then open it up to those who would like to talk about the application but don't have a feeling one way or the other, just wish to speak. During following that public input portion, then the applicant or their representative will be given an opportunity to respond to anything that was brought up during the public input portion. Once that has been completed, the case is closed. Once the case is closed, we move on to the next case. Once we've completed all the cases on our agenda, the board will take a short break. After the break, we will resume and deliberate and make decisions with respect to each of the cases on the docket. Unlike the order in which we hear the cases, we deliberate on the cases based on the applicants who are present and the order they appear on the docket. So if the first applicant has left and the second applicant is present, we would take the second case first. We would then move to the next case on the agenda for which the applicant has remained, and we would go through all of the cases in the order they appear on the agenda and for whom applicants or their representatives are present. Then we will go back to the top of the agenda and take the cases that are left in the order in which they appeared on the agenda, none of those applicants or representatives being present. They will then conclude our meeting. If you wish to know what the decision was with respect to a particular case, you can rush home and catch it on TV, or you can call the Arondacoit Zoning Board or the Building Planning and Zoning Department at the Town Hall tomorrow morning after nine, and they'll be glad to tell you what our decision was. So, I believe we will start with the February portion of the March agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First item on the agenda is case number ZB 1502-1, upon the matter of request by Arthur Mayer and Sandra D. Evans for an area variance to park a semi-tractor on premises 151 Hartsdale Road in an R2 residential district.
My name is Sandra Davins. I reside at 151 Hartsdale Road. I live with my father-in-law, Arthur Mayer. I've been taking care of him because he has multiple disabilities. And I normally live in South Carolina, but he called me and I came. So, his son is a truck driver. His only means of transportation. And the reason I'm here tonight is to ask for a variance three or four times a year to have him let him park his truck that you can only see if you go by the road, by the house. It's parked back far enough that it does not extend past the house. It's been newly painted. And we've moved our fence back so that he can put the whole thing back. I've done -- the truck is approximately eighteen and a half feet long. And I don't know if you have these things or not because --
Yes, we do.
You should have. From the corner of the house to where the back of the house is, there's plenty of room. There's thirty-six and .1 feet. And the truck is only eighteen and a half feet, so it sits right at the corner of the house. Okay? Like I said, the truck has been newly painted. You have a picture of the truck also. It's a 1990. It does not sit and run. New York State law, you're not allowed to go over fifteen minutes anyways. The only purpose of the truck to be there, like I said, was for emergencies if he has to go and get prescriptions or something for my father-in-law. Otherwise, it doesn't move. It doesn't run.
So he takes the truck --
Yes.
-- to the drugstore?
Yes. That's all his -- he does it down home, too. It's all he has for transportation. So if he has to go someplace, the truck will go to Wegmans, because that's where Dad has all of his prescriptions. The store, Walmart. And there's plenty of trucks that park over there, but we're not allowed to.
When you say "go to get prescriptions," are you talking about regular refills?
Yes.
Wegmans mail them to him?
I don't know if they do or not, sir.
My understanding is they have signs posted in Wegmans that say they'll mail the prescriptions to you, particularly if you're disabled. They'll mail them to people out of state who haven't changed their --
I was unaware of that, sir.
And, you know, one of the concerns -- there were concerns that were expressed by some of your neighbors, and one of the concerns that we have is this kind of truck just doesn't really belong or fit in a residential neighborhood. It's like a -- I mean, I would say it's similar to dump trucks and backhoes and other kinds of construction vehicles and commercial-type trucks that belong in commercial areas or, you know, places like that, not in driveways in residential neighborhoods.
I understand that. But there's no place for him to park it, sir, so that he could walk to his dad's house. There's no place to park that truck.
Well, there are plenty of places that I understand. I understand, for example, that Walmart welcomes trucks to park in their parking lot. There's the closer to your dad's place, there's the Culver Ridge Plaza that might allow him to park there three or four times a year under the circumstances.
Do you know the distance between that?
Well, and then there are -- and you live with your father. Are you there when your brother's there?
I live with my father-in-law.
How do you get around town?
I have a vehicle, sir.
All right.
But when my husband comes up here, and I'd like to go on respite because taking care of his father is a 24/7 job. And I haven't been able to go anyplace for a couple of years since this started. None of my neighbors have ever had a problem with this, sir.
Well, somebody had a problem.
Until recently, all right? So what I'm trying to say is, he's not here that often. When he is, it's maybe for a weekend. He doesn't do any maintenance on it or anything like that. It's not an eyesore. It's not like he's letting it sit in there and run. It's just it's his only means of transportation.
I'm going to take issue with you on whether or not it's an eyesore. That's not a question of fact, that's a question of opinion.
Well, that was one of the letters that I received.
Some people view it as an eyesore, particularly in a residential neighborhood.
Those people live way down at the other end of the street, too.
And people have asked us for permission to park, you know, construction trailers and other kinds of commercial vehicles in their driveways in residential areas, and we rarely have granted them permission. Because once you start granting permission, three or four times a year for this truck, then somebody comes in next month and they want four or five times a year for a different truck. And then somebody else, well, they've got a business, and it's really tough for them, and they can't find a place to park their vehicle, so how about their driveway in the residential neighborhood? And before you know it, there's no restrictions on what anybody can park in their driveway anymore. And that's what you're asking us to do, is to say it's okay to park this -- I mean, some commercial vehicles are different than others.
Yes.
And, you know, there are some Time Warner trucks that we've approved that are slightly above -- this isn't slight. This is a major variance that you're requesting. And our job is to find out what is the least variance that's necessary to meet the hardship. And have -- has your -- is it your husband who has the truck? Has he looked at all into what arrangements could be made?
Yeah. We used to park it over there at Walmart, and it cost me over $1,000 because they towed it out of there and took it all the way out to Scottsville.
Why was it towed?
I have no idea. But now all the trucks are back there. That one weekend, they towed trucks out of there. Then Mr. Benson's sign was gone, all the trucks are back, nothing's been said. So I really don't know. Like I said, I've got -- my neighbors don't have a problem with it. I've known these people for a long time, since Dad's been there in '76. I've got letters from my next-door neighbor, Mr. Fowler, that lives at -- well, I don't know where he lives, but he lives over Pemberton, I believe. My next-door neighbor doesn't have a problem with it, and it's always been parked there.
Did you see it?
You're making it sound like it sits there and it runs. It doesn't. There's no noise pollution, there's no air pollution, there's no threat for anybody coming in and doing -- children or something being around it because --
I never assumed that it sat there and ran. I assumed that it sat there parked, like an odd --
No, they're in the -- one of these --
Like an odd vehicle in a residential neighborhood. Did you see the email from Ms. Imhoff?
Who?
Ms. Imhoff, who lives at 191 Hartsdale Road. She sent in an email to document her opposition to your application. It's a residential district. Parking of a commercial semi-tractor on premises would cause potential pollution, safety issues, and detract from the residential neighborhood. To say that your neighbors aren't opposed to it isn't really true. Then there's another email from Diane Root at 199 Hartsdale Road, another neighbor of yours who's also opposed to it.
I didn't really consider them neighbors because they're down near Arlington. I'm next to Woodland. Free Door is down from Woodland. So I -- my neighbors, I'm talking about my neighbors, they're right next door to me. Mr. and Mrs. LaBarbara, Mrs. Callor and Debbie, she's right next door. Mr. Fowler, he doesn't have -- he's over on Pemberton. He doesn't have a problem with it. They all signed it and said that they don't have a problem with it. But as far as I'm concerned, it's not -- how can it be a pollution thing when it's not running?
I agree with you.
He doesn't even have to let it warm up.
Okay.
Okay? He starts it and he goes.
The pollution isn't really the concern. The concern is --
Just the looks of it.
Right, exactly. Precisely, that's precisely it.
So if it was a 2015 cabover, it would look okay?
No. No. It's not the age, it's not the appearance, it's the size and the type of vehicle.
It's 13'6", high.
If it was a four-door sedan, nobody'd have a problem with it.
Okay.
It's not a four-door sedan. It's not a station wagon. It's not a van.
Like I said, it's only there three or four times a year.
You understand that.
Okay? And he doesn't have a good -- he hasn't got any knees left like his dad, so he has a hard time walking. Matter of fact, he's on crutches right now. Okay? So I'm just asking so that he could be there for his dad. And I have pets. He has to take care of them. I can't afford to put them out someplace. But I need some respite once in a while, and it's the only way I can do it.
I don't know if anyone else has any questions.
No, other than the -- I'd just like to make a comment. It's -- I understand your hardship, and there's obviously difficulty there, but there's other solutions that are to get a second car for your husband to have up here and park the truck where it belongs. It doesn't belong in the neighborhood.
Okay.
And unfortunately, I know it's not going to make you happy, but it's an opinion.
Well, I'd be willing to take a car if somebody stopped one to give away.
Well, and I, again, I understand that hardship there, but the hardship, the fact of not being able to have a second car versus having something awkward in a neighborhood that doesn't belong, and then it hurts the rest of the neighborhood. You know, if, like Mr. Hinman said, our chairman said, if we made that exception, there'd be those trucks all over the place.
I don't understand why all of a sudden this comes up. He's been doing this since 1972. And all of a sudden, some people have a problem because it's an eyesore?
He's been parking his truck there since 1972?
Yes, sir. On and off, the same thing, the same reason, everything. Two years ago, he was up here for two weeks so I could take a vacation.
So 43 years there's been a truck parked on Hartsdale?
That's right, sir. And I don't need to lie about it. I have nothing to lose.
So for 43 years, the code's been ignored? Because the code has never --
Nobody's said anything.
The code has never allowed -- have you seen any other trucks like this parked in the driveways in the neighborhood?
Not like that, no. But I've seen a couple of big trucks with the wooden slats on the sides.
Unfortunately --
And nothing was done.
It's just the -- it's the size of the truck. It's not, you know, it's a --
And you can't see it and let you go by it.
What alternatives did you look into, other than parking the truck in the driveway? Have you looked into any?
It's the only alternative. There's nothing else to do. I can't afford another vehicle.
Did you look into parking the truck in a parking lot? Culver Ridge, Walmart, talking to them and making arrangements? Look into what the cost would be for having a taxi, for example, take him from his truck to the house? I know you haven't looked into having the prescriptions delivered any other way.
So then he had to take a taxi and call a taxi every time he wanted to go get something, right? Same thing.
It may be. Have you looked into any alternative?
No, because it was never a problem before.
Okay. Well, when it came to your attention that it was a problem, and you filled out the application, on the application, I believe somewhere on the application it would tell you that part of the process is that we look at is what alternatives are there to the variance. And from when you filed the application until the time that you're here tonight, apparently you haven't looked into what other alternatives might be available, correct? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
There is -- I'm not going to have my husband call a taxi.
Okay.
This is what I don't understand. You're telling -- all right, I understand this is a residential area, and it's been going on since 1972. Why all of a sudden? You know what? I'm going to tell you right now, the people that are opposing this haven't been in our neighborhood, not for very long, okay? They seen the truck once. Oh my God, look at that big old truck sitting there. That doesn't belong here. Let's start some trouble. And I know who started all this two years ago, okay? I'm not going to go into all that.
But they're really not starting trouble. If they moved into the neighborhood and they bought a house in a residential area and expecting -- knowing that it's --
Then they need to use their end of the street on Arlington instead of Woodland. I'm sorry, but I'm really upset.
And I understand, and I sympathize with you, but it's still, you know, it's a residential spot, and if someone new moves into the neighborhood and wants to paint their house and make it look pretty, and yet there's a truck parked across the street, it's a problem.
So three or four times a year for a weekend?
I understand.
That's pretty petty. Thank you.
Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here that wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to come up and talk to us about it? Seeing no one, that case is closed. We'll move on to the next item on our agenda.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1502-2, upon the matter of request by Brian Pelkey, acting as agent for Alfred Gilbert, to appeal the town of Arondacoit code enforcement officer's interpretation declaring 1027 Thomas Avenue in an environmentally protected overlay district EPod Woodlot in an RH River Harbor District.
Before we begin this case, Mr. Orelli and I are working together on a lawsuit, criminal case, and questions were raised about whether or not it would be appropriate for me to sit with respect to this matter. I have no financial interest in this case whatsoever. I have no stake in the outcome, and I have nothing but respect for Mr. Orelli and Mr. Pelkey, and would not have, as I do for most of my colleagues, and that would not have any impact whatsoever on my decision. However, Mr. Orelli and I made a motion in our case, not once but twice, for relief based not on actual unfairness, but on the perception that the result might be affected by certain circumstances. And since we've made that motion in that case, in this case, I think I should apply the same principles that we urged in that case, and I'm not going to partake in this matter, other than I will direct the flow. But I'm not going to have any substantive input, and I will not in any way participate or influence in any way the outcome of the case. It'll be the longest most of you will have seen me sit quiet.
Well, that's probably something I can lay claim to, Mr. Hinman. May I proceed?
Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm Dan Orelli, and my office is at 45 Exchange Boulevard, Rochester, New York, and I appear here with my co-counsel, Brian Pelkey. Before I begin my remarks, I just want to say to the board, it's been just about a year since I worked with you on the other side of the dais, and I'd like to thank you all for all of the attention you'd always given, and I have an expectation that that's what we're going to do here tonight. Why are we here tonight? The reason that we can stand before you and ask for relief from this board, I guess you could call it jurisdictionally, is the Zoning Board of Appeals, and sometimes we overlook it, not just is interested in variance applications, but appeals from rulings of enforcement officials in the town of Arondacoit. That's Section 267 of the town law. And that's what we're doing tonight. We're simply asking this board to correct a ruling that was made by an enforcement official in the town of Arondacoit. Really, nothing more than that. What is the ruling that we're asking to have corrected? On February 24th of 2014, the town code enforcement officer issued a stop work order with regard to the subject's property. The stop work order was based upon an EPod 3 Woodlock Protection District. Subsequent to that, there were other town reports issued, which basically relied upon the 226 stop work order. There was a LaBella report, and then the Director of Development Service put the whole thing together on October 28th, 2014. Why are we here asking you to say, to rule that that stop work order and the subsequent director's report or letter were inappropriate? One at first glance would suggest that the stop work order should have -- or that the application should have been made in front of the planning board. But the position that we're taking tonight is that it's not an EPod. Never was. Well, it might have been an EPod at some point in time, but it wasn't for the life of this particular application. And the reason we say it is this. If you review Section 253.43, that's the map section of your EPod district, and it says very specifically, after it talks about acquiring an EPod map in the town, it says, "The official town of Arondacoit EPod maps --"
It's Section 235, just so if you guys were looking for it, not 253.
235.43. That's Article 9. "The official town of Arondacoit EPod maps shall be used for reference purposes only and shall not be used to delineate specific or exact boundaries of the various overlay districts. Field investigation and/or other environmental analyses may be required in order to determine whether or not a particular piece of property is included within one or more of the overlay districts." So the point is that when that letter was issued on 226-14, the EPod map was only a reference. And the town official should have used what he had available to him, either a field investigation and/or another environmental analysis. That's due diligence before that letter was issued. It's not as complex as it seems. It could have simply involved speaking with the landowner with regard to what was going on down there. Admittedly, trees were removed. Well, that's the whole point. Begs the question. This is about a stop work order. So before it's issued, use the field investigation that's mandated by Section 235.43 and determine what you've got. That wasn't done. Letter was simply issued and sent out. So Section 235.44, the suggestion was made, why aren't we before the planning board? That's not in effect in this particular case because this is a town official who, quote -- I don't mean any disrespect, jumped the gun with regard to the issuance of the stop work order. So what should have been done is some sort of an analysis using field availability, which, again, could have only involved meeting with the landowner, and determining pursuant to Section 235.53, that's your EPod 3 Woodlock District, what you had down there. And it's five acres and the three communities. And in this particular case, what would have made that analysis particularly simplistic is that when -- and all of these records are contained in the town, as well as your EPod records, when your work bridge was built, by virtue of eminent domain, substantial acreage was taken from our client's property, which is what reduced it down below five acres, therefore not being part and parcel of an EPod. So again, we're just asking to rescind the work order. Now, I have with me tonight Dan O'Connor, Heinrich Fischer, a registered landscape architect, and Greg McMahon from McMahon LaRue Associates. And we're available, if the court pleases, to go through that analysis of why, I mean, most importantly, it's just less than five acres. And alternatively, and at the same time, the type of tree, which is mandated in Section 235.53, the tree communities, and I confess, I don't completely understand how they arrive at those tree community conclusions, but it just precludes this being considered as an EPod. I guess if you have any questions, Brian and I will answer them, or we can, if you would like, have the matter of whether it's an EPod or not explained in more detail. Thank you.
Looking for that letter. I don't know if it would be helpful to hear from the code enforcement officer to provide his and/or his interpretation, and then perhaps the applicant could respond to those points as the applicant sees that.
That would be fine. So is the code enforcement officer present?
That's me.
Oh, that's you? Okay.
So I want to make sure everybody got the map of 1027 Thomas Avenue Woodlot. I want you to notice the boundaries of the actual parcel of 1027 Thomas Avenue. So you can see that that, if you're a code enforcement official with the town of Arondacoit, the first thing you do is you get a complaint, right? Complaint comes in. For 1027 Thomas Avenue, there's obviously some cutting going on. There's a complaint in the neighborhood. The first thing you do is you go out and investigate. You see -- You see what's going on. Because that's what every code enforcement does in the town of Arondacoit. Complaint comes in, you go out and investigate. When I investigated and obviously noticed that 1027 Thomas Avenue is in a woodlot. If you're going to do work such as it was going on in a woodlot, and I don't know if you guys have the pictures, but I'll pass them around. This was the work that was going on in the woodlot when the code enforcement official went out and observed what was going on. So the code enforcement official receives a complaint. They go out and they look at it. They notice that these trees, a couple hundred, give or take, because there's no way of knowing, because the trees have been down for a number of days, it seemed, had been felled and those in the woodlot. So you go and you check in the town registry, is there an EPod permit? There is no EPod permit. So you obviously are working in an EPod without a permit from the planning board. That is a violation of the zoning code. This work was alleged to have taken place sometime in January and then reported to the town thereafter. There's no way of knowing the exact date of when it took place. So we'll never know the full extent of a field investigation that would have went on because if you went out in the field and investigated after the fact, this is what you're going to have is a number of trees on the ground. And, you know, every time you go out, alls you have is you have the official town EPod map. Yes, it's open to interpretation. But I think what you have to look at is in terms of, look at the lot that 1027 is on. Does that seem to be ambiguous in any way? In terms of what the boundaries for that lot would be? The entire lot is on the town's official EPod map. If you want to argue the EPod maps, that's fine. 235-44 says any town resident, Mr. Gilbert, anyone that has an EPod can go to the planning board and get themselves taken out an EPod if they make the case that they shouldn't belong in one. And to take a step back for a second, the precedent you set, the reason a town like Arondacoit has EPods is we have very sensitive environmental areas which make Arondacoit what it is, right? You have steep slopes, you have great forested areas. You can't allow, at the end of the day, certain areas to be disturbed without the proper mitigation levels in effect. Which is why I give the applicant credit. After being this brought to their attention, they went to the planning board and started the process of, at the end of the day, it's about compliance. You want compliance, you're not looking to punish anyone arbitrarily. They started going to the planning board. So about a year ago today, they started going through the planning board process. They were obviously working with the planning board at the time. They instituted some emergency measures because they realized that the, and this isn't putting words in, this is the applicant's words at the time and the engineers, there were some emergency measures that need to be put in place to mitigate any erosion damage that could come from disrupting an EPod near a water course like the Genesee River. So they went out and they put a silt fence up. They seeded and strawed the area so that the area was stabilized. As you know, there's a grade there.
Who did this work?
I would defer to the applicant's engineer who was doing the work at the time.
Okay.
But Mark McGrath was the engineer that I'm aware of, whoever they got to do the work. So about a year ago, they decided to go and do this work because they realized it was an emergency situation. They had erosion controls that need to be put into place. They went and did that. There was a number of, and Bob Kiley's here, who is a member of our town staff. They submitted a number of SWIP reports at the time. Explain what a SWIP report is.
Correct, yeah. The, this site in general, once disturbed, disturbed more than an acre of land. If there's more than an acre of land disturbed in any construction-type mannerisms, you have to apply for a permit through the state of New York. So a stormwater pollution prevention plan was developed by McMahon Leroux. And that's Greg McMahon, who developed that SWIP, was reviewed by the town, approved. And all of the measures in the SWIP were installed. And we have been receiving inspection reports, I think weekly or bi-weekly. So they have been coming in quite regularly.
So throughout the course of last spring and summer, speaking with a number of the representatives from the applicant, the town was working towards what we always do with code situations is compliance. You don't, at the end of the day, you want to figure out why it happened and how you can bring people into compliance with the code. Sometime in the summer of last year, that stopped. We continue, I believe, to receive SWIP reports. I'm not...
We do, off and on, correct.
So I guess what we have is, you have, before us is if you want to challenge the maps, it's fine. There's a provision in the code for that. 235-44 is very clear. If you think you're not in an EPod, you go to the planning board and you prove your case that you're not supposed to be in an EPod. When a town interpretation of an enforcement action is very clear, you have a town official EPod map. You have, you go out, you look at the address, 1027 Thomas Avenue. You notice the pictures I sent around, that was what the code enforcement official saw. And then you check for a permit. There's no permit. And that's a violation. It's pretty straightforward. I don't, if there wants to be a, we can, the adjudication of a map is fine to have, but it's just at the planning board. It's not at the zoning board level.
And I can follow up just really briefly on that. From a procedural standpoint, and I understand it seems like the applicant's in a bit of a holding pattern because they're not sure how to proceed or what route because of this EPod issue. I will say though, from my perspective, that 235-44 is pretty clear. And the applicant's attorney is correct when he references the general provision in town law that provides that determinations by administrative officials of the town are reviewable by this board, and that's accurate. But there's a very specific provision in your town code just relative to these types of appeals. And that's 235-44. And the language, and I'll read it verbatim, states that "Appeals from a determination of the Town Department of Planning and Zoning Regarding the Boundaries of Overlay Districts shall be made to the Town Planning Board in accordance with the public hearing procedures of Article 15 of this chapter." So again, the director's role here was that he is, and this is another quote from the code, "responsible for interpreting the environmental protection overlay district boundaries based on an interpretation of the official town of Arondacoit EPod map as well as the use of various criteria set forth in this article for determining the district boundaries." It appears as though what happened is that director looked at the existing EPod map. In his opinion, there was no question that the property, according to the currently adopted maps, fell within it. And that was sort of the end of the inquiry. The applicant, as we stated, of course, has the ability and the opportunity, if they choose to come before the planning board, which is clearly the appropriate body, to express why they think that it's inappropriate that the property is contained within the woodlot EPod. And that's all the reasons that the attorney alluded to, that the size of the property, the types of trees there and whatnot. But it's nowhere in the code does this board have the, sort of the jurisdiction over that determination of weighing all of those different factors and determining whether or not it's appropriate that this property, which is currently obviously included in the EPod map, whether or not it should remain there. That is a planning board consideration. So in my opinion, your determination is, if anything, I think at best, whether or not the director, in his role, you know, reviewing the material in front of him, made, you know, the appropriate call that the property is within the EPod district. And again, that does not preclude the applicant then from having the opportunity to come before the planning board and express why they think that it is inappropriate that the property is included. And at that time, the planning board can have a favorable disposition and say, you know, you're right, because of all these factors, we believe that the map should be amended. This board doesn't have the power to do that, though, to amend the map.
So they're in front of this board just to determine whether Mr. Weatherby made the right call?
At best. I think that that's even a stretch. That I think that probably the entire inquiry should be before the planning board. But yes, at best.
Deputy H... I mean, we're looking for, you're looking for a result of us saying it's not an EPod.
Well, I think...
The town is...
No, not, not...
Well, and even in the letter, just to point out too, before, in closing on my end, the letter is all about the construction of the EPod. Trees, nature of the size of the lot, things of that nature. Which speaks to the map in terms of whether or not you believe you're in it. And that's fine. That's perfectly appropriate. That's handled in the code in terms of 235-44. And we can put them on, I mean, we can have it on the next planning board calendar. We could do it starting next week. But that's just, in terms of this interpretation, it's whether or not are you in, you know, is it 1027 Thomas Avenue? Were trees cut down in 1027, 1027 Thomas Avenue without a permit? And if, like I said, we have tons of, we just had one at the planning board this past month. We have these EPods for a reason. If you don't...
Do you have a copy of that letter from the 26th of February? Because we don't have it in our pack.
26th. Can we back up from here? Going back to 235-43, the first sentence says, "Verbatim, the locations and boundaries of all environmental protection overlay districts shall be delineated on an official set of maps on the file of the town clerk's office and town building permit." So I think that answers the question whether or not Mr. Weatherby made the right choice. I think this is the official map. The property lies within, was defined as an EPod on 1027 Thomas Avenue. So it's appropriate that Mr. Weatherby made the decision that he did because the official town map here says that that property lies within an EPod. And that's in the first sentence of 1035. I think the assumption that you make is that he didn't have the authority or maybe jumped the gun is invalid simply because of the article that you pointed out in section 235.43 that says that he does have the authority based on the official maps that's been established.
Wait, Mike, what, you were looking for the stop work order?
Yeah.
Okay. And just to point out too, that is not, was not the subject of the letter. So when you receive a challenge to an opinion or a code determination, it's usually spoken to directly in the letter. That is not in detail spoken to in this letter. So I can go, we can go grab the stop work order?
I guess the question is...
And also just procedurally, again, the actual stop work order, to my knowledge, was not appealed within the requisite time period. So that stop work order itself is not the subject of this appeal. It's the determination that the director issued that the property is within the EPod.
It's as simple as Mr. Evans just said. It sounds like Nick didn't do anything wrong based on what his maps show. My question is...
The maps could be wrong.
Well, and at this point, what, you know...
That's what you're asking, you know, that's...
What do you want us to do next? Do you want us to say, okay, move on?
No, I think that's, obviously, you're, you do whatever you feel is appropriate. I think what I, what I, the way I view this is to go to the planning board because that's the precedent and that's the way that the town code reads. If you don't uphold that precedent, you're going to have a lot of people out there that live in EPods that are going to start scratching their heads about the types of actions they could take without repercussions, without taking the proper precautions. Just like if you were to go build a house or build a fence. It's not saying that nobody, you can't do it. You just need to get a permit. So it's not that they couldn't do work in an EPod. It's just you need to be permitted to do it, just as if you were to put up a fence or any other structure on your property. And if you don't think you belong in an EPod, you go to the planning board and you say, hey, these are all the reasons why I don't think I belong in an EPod. Let's have a conversation. That's not what's...
Was there a follow-up letter by you suggesting that they start to replant and do stuff? Putting it back?
No, the town planning board, starting last March, asked the town engineer for, and recommendations on ways that you could replant that area because for a couple of obvious reasons, there's a uniqueness to the area. Aside from the fact that it was a woodlot EPod, it happens to be within 100 yards or so of the Genesee River. The area is inhabited by a lot of wildlife. So if you were to make certain plantings there, you could be gnawed, you know, you could chew, a deer could chew a tree down to a stump in a very short order. So the planning board asked the town engineer to issue a recommendations on what would work. At the end of the day, that holds no water. That was a recommendation. It's up to the applicant...
So it wasn't something that was, said, okay, you guys got to start repairing?
No, no, no. And that's where, that's another, that's another place where we've told, we've said that to the applicant and his agents a number of times that the LaBella report is what it is. The town planning board asked the town engineer to come up with a way that you could make the place whole again. I don't agree with it. That's not the point.
All right.
The point is they asked, the town planning board asked for recommendations to the town engineer to what would actually grow there? In that deer wouldn't ravage it and you wouldn't have the erosion issues that would come with having dead foliage?
So it wasn't an actual part of your violation that you required them to start to replant?
No.
Yeah, that would be inappropriate.
But remember this, and the applicant stated this on the record at the planning board meeting, that the actions were made to clean up the property. And that's perfectly a legitimate reason. But you just need to get the proper permitting to do that. And also prove how by taking out all those trees that close to a water course, you're not creating an erosion situation, which the applicant, to their credit, rectified with emergency measures they took. They put up a silt fence. They seeded and strawed the area. So there is now grass there holding the area back.
About all the logs and all the debris that's still there, is that still there? Or has it been removed?
To my knowledge, it's still there. And we've told the applicant and, again, the people representing them that in order to clean up the area for the neighborhood and to do this, the violation's over. They could take the wood out of there to clean it up so that they wouldn't have to, you know, have the neighbors and people wouldn't have to look at it anymore. That's not...
Is this the same property that they've been trying to get brownfield money for years to...
I would leave that to the applicant to address.
Do you know, it is the same property?
It's been the subject of that development for some time.
Okay.
As long as the ball came back, maybe in the interest of moving forward and belaboring the subject.
Before you continue, counsel, just two quick questions. I guess one question. The applicant would have the opportunity through the planning board, just make sure I understand this correctly, to either A, get a license or a permit, rather, to do this type of work, or B, to challenge the town EPod map. And those are two avenues that are available for the applicant through the planning board. Is that, is that accurate? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, that's correct. Yes, that is correct.
I don't know if I completely agree with the challenge component, no. But...
I mean, the code is very clear under 235-44. Appeals from a determination of the Town Department of Planning and Zoning regarding the boundaries of overlay districts shall be made to the Town Planning Board in accordance with the public hearing procedures of Article 15.
I appreciate that. I'd like to hear Mr. Orelli's opinion on the matter.
That, that may be in effect if it is an EPod wooded district pursuant to the statute. But what we're trying to say is that in this instance, in February of 2014, when that map, that official town map that was referred to, was taken a look at in context of removing trees down there, that was superficial. That was not due diligence pursuant to 235.43. As clear as 235.44 is, it says in no uncertain terms that that map is a reference map only. And nothing else was done. The suggestion, and all they needed to do was some basic investigative field work with the owner or whomever. I don't want to belabor the point, but the suggestion is that it was done without permit. Had that section been complied with, permit wouldn't have been necessary. The suggestion is that those trees were removed. He was entitled to remove trees because 235.43 wasn't complied with. All we're asking is if we could go back, suggest that the 226 letter or the subsequent verification of that letter by the Director of Development Services. Your board is called a zoning board of appeals for a reason. And it's very clear that an official action of a town official is subject to your review. So this is the right place to go because that section of the law could have been more fully complied with and it wasn't. That's all. Okay? If it turns out that more action is required on this property, perhaps the planning board might be the right place to go. And let me suggest this to you. If we can agree that perhaps the action that was taken on 226 and verified thereafter was quicker than it should have been, subject to maybe more review, which is what the statute says, that's all we're asking tonight. Rescind that letter. That's your purview. That's why you're a board of appeals. Then... Then I would be happy and recommend to my client that we refer the matter over to the planning board for further determination.
Okay.
But, but going to the planning board under a violative perspective is different than going to the planning board under a review after you have reviewed the letters.
Respectfully.
I, I just have a, a quick question. So could, could you then explain, in what circumstances do you think that the appeal procedure that's specified in the section dealing with EPod determinations by the Town Department of Planning and Zoning, 235-44, that last sentence where it says, "Appeals from determination of the Town Department," and not only for those that are officially and no one argues with it within an EPod, it says, "Regarding boundaries of the overlay district." So any determination by the director regarding the boundary of the district should be before the planning board. If that's, if this isn't the type of situation that's appropriately appealed to the planning board, what would be?
I don't know. On a case-by-case basis. All I know is that in this instance, when this letter, stop work order and the subsequent verifications were issued, nothing was done other than refer to the official town map in the statute.
And you, you may be accurate that that was inappropriate, but I, I don't know, and I'm not saying that you are, but, but, but I'm saying that that's, that's the, that's for the planning board to determine whether or not the ma, that there was an, there, that that was an appropriate call and whether or not the property should be within the district boundaries.
In respect, I want to, I want to address a few things because we keep coming back to a field investigation. You come back to a field investigation where you have a couple hundred trees on the ground, you have this map. Now, here's the thing. In the town of Aronacoy, there is unique topography, so you end up referencing EPod maps often. So when you look at this map, on that, so that's 1027 Thomas Avenue. There is no ambiguity when you look at that, when 97% of that lot is covered with a wood lot. It's not as if, so for instance, say you go out there. Say you went out there and you looked at it and you said, you know, it's interesting lot, there's like partially coming over here, there's like an, a boundary that's not clearly defined. I do, we do that all the time. We, that happens every day, or at least every week here, where a situation comes and you look at. There is no ambiguity about that lot and whether or not it comprises the town's official woodlot map. And if you would like to challenge that map, there's a way to do it. It's 235-44. As you said in the letter for your challenge, that you are challenging whether or not you're in an EPod. You weren't challenging the stop work order, you weren't challenging anything else. It was whether or not you were in an EPod. And the way to do that is you go to the planning board, you adjudicate that matter.
I have a quick question. Was there any environmental studies that, that you guys did, either from the Marocani Environmental Management, the official, where the maps that show that you weren't in an EPod?
No, I don't think we submitted a report. But look, you know, there's a lot of people waiting and, and this is, I could do one of two things now, again. Mr. Weatherby makes good points, but the simple fact, and, and, and Ms. Champion, I think your interpretations are very, are very close to accurate. But then why do you have a section that says the map is only used for a reference and you specifically are mandated to delineate specific or exact boundaries by using other means? I mean, it just, you're, you've got unfortunately, and this happens very often, I've had experience with regard to town matters for a long time. Sometimes you have a situation, hold on, Mr. Weatherby, I'm going to get there.
Well, I wouldn't interrupt you, sir.
Sometimes you have a situation where two sections of the law simply are, aren't in complete agreement. And all we're asking to do is just take a step back, but, but...
Can I just interject for a second?
We're happy to go to the planning board for further resolution, so long as we could have the relief requested here tonight. Now, I think, and, and, and I'm really, I, I don't want to be argumentative and, and it's, it's not using our time well. One last thing. Mr. O'Connor has an overlay that may be helpful with regard to what could have been seen had 240, or had 235.30, 43 been complied with. I don't, I don't think we need to belabor the matter anymore.
But I just want to make a point though, in terms of precedent, in terms of how the code's administered, and this is a practical matter. If there's ambiguity on the map, by all means, I, I welcome, that happens. You have to be more clear about it. There's, you go out and look at this, there wasn't, it's not very ambiguous. And if you're going to, in a situation where you're that close, especially to the Genesee River, or you're on a steep slope, you'd, you'd be asking, so what, every time that someone gets, is in an EPod, the, the reason the code's written that way, and Dan cites it correctly, it's an interpretation. And when there's ambiguity, you have to seek out, but there's not, in terms of our reading of the official town maps, this is what we have to work with. And also, when you go out and there's a couple hundred trees laying around, it's, I don't know, it seems pretty, it's pretty clear.
Can I look at that map?
I'm going to sit down, perhaps Mr. O'Connor might want...
You can swear in.
Mr. O'Connor, you raise your right hand, do you swear affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? Okay. For those who may be wondering, we don't swear attorneys because...
Sure. And this, by the way, this is the map that's readily available.
Their ethical rules require them to be candid with all tribunals, so we don't swear attorneys. That's why we swear non-attorney witnesses or applicants.
And this is the map that's on the website. It's a blown-up version so you can actually see the parcel.
That's what it is. For one thing...
Could you, sir, could you go and address the microphone? Thank you. You can keep it.
This is a section of the map right here that Al Gilbert was given by the town, what, two months after this happened? This map does not show the O'Rourke Bridge over the tip of the, the EPod the way that one does. Okay? This is the map you get off the internet, which shows that the, the O'Rourke Bridge covers the upper tip of the, the EPod. You know what that means? That means if you drive across that bridge, you don't run into trees.
You know what it also doesn't show?
No, but you just...
The trees south of that parcel too.
But you just, you just said it yourself.
That are contiguous to that lot.
That bridge goes over the top of the EPod.
Right.
So you, so it's an EPod, so he didn't do anything wrong. You just said it.
It's not an EPod if it's not five acres by definition.
Why, and I understand that because you lost part of it in the, in the bridge acquired.
That's not, but that's not actually, but Mike, to your point though, you would adjudicate that at the planning board and also if you're going to open it up and say that things, say that this puts it below five acres, which I don't think that it does when you survey it. When you have it, sir, I, I'm not interrupting you.
Let's not interrupt each other.
When you go, if you're going to open it up to say that things aren't in it, you could open it up and say that thing, there's more trees south of it. I mean, and that's why the argument, the conversation in terms of the maps in 235-44 is at the planning board level. Tonight, today, the matter is, you have, you have maps, they're interpreted, that's the interpretation. I...
I have a question about this whole thing.
Sure.
Listening to this back and forth, I'm trying to figure out who's sitting in judgment of who here? What are we looking for? According to Mr. O'Reilly, it's, it's a, it's a determination that Mr. Weatherby jumped the gun on this and that should never have been done. But then again, I hear that this is an EPod, this is a sensitive area, and that the procedure is to go to the planning board to get the okay to do this. So on the one hand, we have somebody that started a project without a permit, and on the other hand, we have a town official who said, you got to stop this until this is cleared up. Now, we're being put in a position of judge, not attorney, judge, to make a decision here. I am in no way qualified to be a judge. Well, that depends on who you talk to, I suppose, but I feel like I'm kind of being put on the spot here because number one, I think my inclination is to support the town official for doing what he believes is the right move, for the protection of our town's woodland. I think that's part of the, that's part of the job. So I have no reason to say, well, you shouldn't have done that, when on the other hand, the other person cutting down hundreds of trees probably shouldn't have done that either before, you know, getting the proper permits. So it's, we're between a rock and a hard place here. And I'm not sure I understand what the importance of our determination is with regard to his decision and how it would reflect anything to do with the planning board. I'm very confused about that.
I think that's an important point because I, it, it's very clear to me that regardless of the decision that this board makes tonight, I mean, you're not issuing any finality. So even if, if you say, you know, that, that you agree that Nick in reviewing the map, you know, made the right interpretation, that it's within the EPod boundary, that doesn't prevent the applicant from disputing that before the planning board. It doesn't prevent them from, if they choose to just pursue the EPod permit, pursuing the EPod permit, it doesn't really change anything about the way that they go about their application because again, this board doesn't have the power to say, no, you're not in the EPod. So regardless, they have to go the next step and they have to go to the planning board and they have to get, if they want to get out of the EPod, they have to make that case and the planning board has to agree that the map should be changed or if they want to not fight that battle and instead get an EPod permit and come into compliance, they can do that. But this board doesn't have the power to change the map and to take them out of the EPod.
I think we're, we're going round and round for...
Right.
All the wrong reasons.
I guess I'll ask, I have one final question. Can I just ask a question, a procedural question?
Yes.
If we were to determine that based on this section 235.43, which says that the map is for presumptive purposes only, if we're to determine that Mr. Weatherby did not do his due diligence, and we make that determination, Mr. Weatherby could go out tomorrow with a surveyor to walk the line and issue a stop work order anyway, right?
Correct.
Okay.
It doesn't, you making that determination does not mean now that this property's no longer in the EPod.
Yeah, all they're saying is that he just didn't do all the steps. He didn't follow all the steps, so we got to make him go out there and do it again.
That's, that's their position.
And odds are he'll come to the same conclusion and odds are they'll have to go to the zoning board anyway. I mean, the planning board anyway.
The planning board, right, yeah. And I can't, I can't speak to that, but, you know...
No, I just want to point out too that back in February, when we were working with the applicant and there was a dialogue with them, they were, for three months, we were talking about ways in which to remediate the site or put trees back on the site. So if in those three months, I don't necessarily know what changed, but...
There was a meeting scheduled for May 19th that was canceled by the town.
Sir, I, I do not know what you're referencing.
There was a planning board meeting scheduled for May 19th.
Okay.
In which Mr. Gilbert was going to go present his case. And that meeting was canceled.
It was either canceled because there wasn't anything on the agenda or, sir, we...
It was taken off the agenda by the town.
Sir, I do not, I respectfully, I have no idea what you're talking about.
I, I don't think, well, excuse me.
No, I...
I don't think that, whether a meeting was canceled or not, i- isn't really relevant to the issue that's before the board. So are there any other comments or questions from the board?
Yeah, I, I just have one again.
When the board is done, then we'll open it up for public input.
And, and as far as Mr. Weatherby performing his job correctly, in 235-43, it states a series of environmental studies and process to determine whether or not you're in an EPod or not. The official wetlands map, the town, New York City Department of Environment and Conservation, it's Marocani Environmental Management. So there are steps to take before, in a, in a pursuit of a permit to determine whether or not you're in an EPod. And, and it's not that he, Mr. Weatherby, you know, did not perform his duty, but I think more importantly, the applicant didn't do their due diligence also to, to get a permit and take all the necessary steps to determine what the, what the land was or was not.
Did I show you this overlay? I blew up the EPod map that's on the internet, that's this thing here. I made it match the scale of the Google map over, map that I can get on the internet. I checked it by measuring the distance from the intersection of Lake Avenue and Pattonwood Drive and this other intersection and the intersection at Eaton and Thomas. I made a tracing of this EPod map. If you put it here, there's no way that you could say that that's five acres of woodland. There's absolutely no way that you could call that five acres. So it is not a wood, uh, EPod, period. You can look at this closer if you'd like.
All right. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this application?
Mr. Chair, excuse me. Sir, I don't, I don't, I don't know your name for the record. I'm sorry.
Daniel P. O'Connor.
Daniel.
All apostrophe, C-O-N-N-O.
Thank you very much.
Is there any, is there no one who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who would like to come up and chat about it? Seeing none, the case is closed. We'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the last case, I believe, that we had left from, that was adjourned from February.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, case number ZB 1502-3. Upon the matter of request by Romeo Land LTD for area variances to construct a 1,572 square foot Dunkin' Donuts with less than required front and rear setbacks, parking, lot depth, lot area and exceeding maximum allowable impervious surface on premises 1220 East Ridge Road in a C commercial district.
Good evening. My name is Frank Romeo. I'm the owner of Romeo Land Limited, the applicant. We are proposing to build a...
Hold on. Excuse me a minute. Can you give us your address and then raise your right hand?
Our office address is 745 Titus Avenue, 14617.
Do you swear affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
We are intending to build a Dunkin' Donuts store at the northwest corner of Ridge Road and Portland Avenue, which was formerly occupied by, uh, Beverly, which moved up the street. The property's been vacant for quite some time and we have the property under contract, contingent on receiving all of our approvals and, uh... This property has not changed. It's been used as a service station, gas station for many, many years. And we have spent quite a bit of time with the folks from Dunkin' Donuts trying to design a building and a layout that works on this site. Obviously, the site is quite constricted. It's a small site. It's .27 acres. I, by the way, I do have several people here with me tonight. I have Chris Duer, the architect of the project. I have Mark Donahoe from Dunkin' Brands. They can address any questions you may have about the operation of the store. And I also have Sam Belzine, who's the operator of the store. We do, the building we're going to, we anticipate building would be a one-story slab-on-grade construction building of 1,720.5 square feet. We would demolish all the existing building on the premises, remove the associated site improvements that could not be reused and rebuild that entire, on that entire property. We do need a number of variances and there's a little bit of change from when we submitted our application. We're not going to need any sign variances. We're going to be in compliance with all the signs. We've removed earlier today our pylon sign, so there'll be no pylon sign at this location. And we've also, we'll be talking about the parking in a few minutes. We've made an agreement with some ancillary off-site parking from the folks that own Georgetown Plaza. But let's go through the site requested variances here. Property is currently 100 feet wide, or excuse me, the property is 104 feet wide and the required width, according to the zoning code, is 100 feet. The property is 116 feet deep and the required depth is 200 feet. The area of the property is 12,007 square feet and the required size is a minimum of 20,000 square feet. We, the side yard, we need a five-foot setback on the side yard and we're proposing 11 feet, 11 inches. Our rear yard setback... Our rear yard setback required is 60 feet and we're proposing 38 feet, 3 inches. Front yard is the same at 60 feet as required and we are proposing 21 feet, 1 inch. This is on a corner and the corner setback is 50 feet and we're proposing 53 feet. Our building height is fine, requirement is 45 feet, will be a maximum of 21 feet, 3 inches. Our lot occupancy requirement is 33.33 percent and we're proposing 14.32 percent. Our maximum impervious area is 80 percent required and we're proposing 82.40. We are required to have 17 parking spaces and we're providing 12 on the site and we have an agreement with Georgetown Plaza for seven parking spaces. The code reads, I believe, that the off-site parking has to be on an adjacent parcel. This is not immediately adjacent to our site. It's to the west, approximately 900 feet. And we have tried, pretty diligently, to try to find some off-site parking, talking to all the adjacent parcels and a number of places. We were supposed to be here a month ago, the storm canceled this meeting. We went to the planning board workshop and to a public hearing and we had not secured those spaces at that time, but we did secure them today. That's a quick overview of the project. I'd be happy to answer any questions or clarify anything or whatever I can do.
If I understand you correctly, you need a front setback variance?
We need, let me just make sure here, I wanna say the right thing. Yes, we need a front setback variance. We need a rear setback variance. We need an impervious area variance and we need a depth and area variance. Those two are, we, we're not sure. We tried to search the record. We asked the town staff to search the record. We would hope that somebody got a variance before us, but we haven't been able to find that. So we're, we need those also.
To build any new building ostensibly, you would need a variance on the site unless you were totally utilizing an old, the old structure.
Yeah, if you, if you look at our application book on tab nine, you can see we've got a site plan there and it shows all the variances. The buildable area variance free for this lot would be a one-foot by 49-foot development box. So it's been pretty tough to redevelop this parcel for anybody that comes along.
And the applicant, at the urging of the planning board, one of the things that they had talked to him about was talk to the surrounding properties, because there's an excess of parking on Ridge Road, there's some plazas. To the applicant's credit, they found a plaza nearby where there was some excess parking and signed an agreement for more than the needed parking. The variance is because the code requires contiguous parking as opposed to this, which is just down the street, is what the relief is for. It's not for the spaces needed.
Is that parking, is that additional parking across Ridge Road?
No, no, it's on the same side, I'm sorry. Georgetown, where Keenons is.
Yeah, yeah.
I figured you wouldn't know where that was.
And you actually don't cross a road, you actually don't even cross the side street?
No, there's all sidewalks on the north side going west from the parcel.
And there's no, there's no road in between? That's all sidewalk?
Right, there's, immediately to the west, adjacent to our parcel is an apartment project. And then there's another commercial retail building, another commercial retail building, and then there is the Georgetown Plaza, Keenons. Yeah, we've got a, I've got a map we can pass around to you in aerial.
I think, I think we, you have the map, Michelle, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's this, Ross, I was saying?
Yep.
Would there be an entrance to this on Ridge Road or is that just the exit from the drive?
No, there's, there's two, there's an entrance on Portland Avenue and one on Ridge Road.
Okay, so both of those are entrances and exits?
That's correct.
Planning, look at anything for traffic?
Well...
This seems awful, awful tight at that corner, going in and out.
And they will, the planning board, that it's obviously something that's in their jurisdiction and they are looking at traffic in Monroe County DOT ultimately because they're not town roads. Monroe County DOT has the final say over the traffic on their roads. So the planning board is certainly looking at that and I believe that the applicant has gotten the requisite information to Monroe County DOT to start their, to complete their analysis.
Just so you know, to answer your question a little more specifically, we, we did complete a traffic study. We did provide it to the town and we provided it to Monroe County DOT. We've had several meetings with Monroe County DOT. They have had a few questions. They wanted some more information. We recently went out last Thursday and collected some more data for them. They wanted some 24-hour counts and things and we believe that the counts, the information supported our position, but we don't have a determination back from DOT about that yet. We're anticipating getting that before we get back to the planning board though. I understand your concern. It looks that way.
It's tight.
But, but there has been no great amount of accidents at that intersection, at that corner. Of course, we're gonna, certainly hoping we have a lot of traffic and we have a very good location there. We've tried to alleviate those concerns from a planning standpoint and from, you know, traffic standpoint, working with the county. The county has not said, absolutely not, you can't have, you know, a exit on Ridge Road. They just wanna make sure that everything works according to their standards and we're happy to supply them with as much information as they want.
So getting, getting back to the variances that you need, if I understand correctly, the lot depth and the lot area variances are really asking for the lot to stay the way it is and has been for quite some time, right?
Yes, sir. That's absolutely correct.
So, and the front setback, the rear setback, and the impervious area variances, those would be to allow the project to go forward for further review by the planning board and the appropriate county agencies that would address issues like concentration of the, whether it's a heavy concentration of customers and traffic on the roads and things of that nature?
That's correct.
So if we denied it, it goes no further?
It goes no further.
Right, okay.
All right. But if you take a look at the site plan and the building plan, I mean, we've spent a lot of time, this project didn't just happen a couple of months ago when we made this application. We've been working on this for almost a year before we got to the town and made a formal application, trying to make this workable. We've done, we tried to reuse the existing building. That didn't work. We tried to put the building on the street. That didn't work. We tried to make the building, you can't really make it any smaller, the inside doesn't work. And we need the parking, we need a drive lane, we need the drive-through and it, we're just, we're very close. And we'd like to do this project. We think it's a, you know, a great cleanup on that corner. Entrance to a run to quite, be a vast improvement to what's there now.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I understand, nothing's gonna fit on this lot, so you're gonna need the variances. But you mentioned the impervious surface variance, the request, and I believe you said it was 82 point something, but on the application it says 86 percent. I just am curious what the right number was.
Well, the right number as far as I'm concerned is the one I wrote down in my letter of intent. I'm not sure about the application, because I may not have filled it out, but I can, I can tell you, I'm gonna, hang on.
86 percent, right?
Hang on, I'm gonna ask the architect, because he's here. So if it's right, I did it. If it's wrong, he did it.
Okay, I understand, I like that.
Okay. There's no pressure though. Could you come on up over here and, listen, state your name and address and get sworn in?
On page seven.
I don't wanna take your job though, Mr. Chairman.
No. Raise your hand. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I swear.
Okay, if you could state your name and address?
My name is Chris Duer. I live at 1375 Highland Avenue in Rochester, New York. The, simply, my calculation is 86.
Okay, I stand corrected. Which is what's on page seven of the booklet, the 86 percent?
It's clearly a typo on my mistake.
That could have very well, it, it says 86 percent everywhere, but I believe before you had mentioned 82 something.
I, I did.
Okay.
But I will say this, when we met with the county a couple of weeks ago, the impervious surface question came up, obviously, because you're on a main thoroughfare, you don't wanna, you wanna make sure, they're county roads, they have the biggest, you know, none of us want to have a problem in terms of drainage. And they were very clear in saying they didn't see, correct if I'm wrong, if you guys heard it differently. And they'll, they'll put this in writing, I'm sure, because they're very good at documenting everything, that they did not see the drainage being an issue due to the increased impervious surface for the simple fact that in context of the Ridge Road corridor, on this small site, another 6 percent in terms of impervious surface was not...
6 percent of that lot size.
That lot size was not...
Yeah, the lot size is 12,007 square feet.
Was not gonna impact the drain, the stormwater drainage on that, that site. And they spoke to it directly.
Yeah, that, that was, of the hour meeting, that was about 60 seconds.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this application? Is there anyone who'd like to come and chat with us about this application? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing and move on to the first item that was on our March agenda, the new item.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1503-1. Upon the matter of request by Mark Hordy, acting as agent for Georgetown Plaza LLC, for an area variance to install tenant faces on existing freestanding sign exceeding maximum allowable square footage and height on premises 1,000 East Ridge Road, Georgetown Plaza LLC in a C commercial district.
My name's Anthony Fravato. I'm with Georgetown Plaza at 1,000 East Ridge Road.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So what we're looking to do here is we have an existing sign to the plaza and we're hoping to modify and alter the sign, which would enlarge it, and we're looking to provide space for all of our tenants to promote their business at the front, instead of just on the building itself.
So in looking at your, looking at your application, it seems to me that the finished product is gonna look remarkably like what's directly across the street.
Exactly.
And it's just gonna be on the north side instead of on the south side?
Correct. Color-wise, size-wise.
And you're gonna use what's there already and just add to it?
Add on to it, yes.
And it'll be similar to the signs that we approved at the corner of Ridge and Goodman in the old, I don't know what they call it, it used to be, I always refer to it as Tops Plaza, the old one?
Correct. And the new Kate Mart Plaza that Tops moved into as well.
Right, okay.
Make sure I understand, Mr. Chairman. Are you saying that this sign is the same square footage as the one that's in the new Tops Plaza?
No, I'm saying it's a, from the street, it will appear to be the same kind of sign. It'll have the listings of all the tenants. It's gonna look the same in terms of color, roughly the height is gonna be the same. It's gonna be very similar in design and style to what's down at Ridge and Goodman and what's across the street at the new Tops Plaza.
Does anyone from the town know what the variance we granted to the property across the street was for their sign's square footage? I know we had to grant them a height variance and I think we had to, I know we, I'm pretty sure we had to grant them a square footage variance also, but I don't believe it was 134 square foot variance. I don't believe that we gave them that much. Because I wanna make, make sure that we maintain the character of the neighborhood and we did give people across the street a variance, I believe, but not this substantial.
Are you talking about mine, are you talking about what Porsonic is?
Correct. And I mean, I don't need the second, but by the time we're done with the deliberations, when we're getting to deliberations, I'd like to know that. Please.
Assuming that the variance that we granted to the plaza across the street were to be, was less than what you're asking for, is it possible to reduce the size and have the tenants on there?
The one restraint we have is we're trying to utilize what's existing as far as the pillars that are there and the top portion. So we're just kinda filling in the middle per se. If I'm not mistaken, they'll find, I believe we're within 15 square foot of what's across the street and what's in variance. Could it be smaller? Yes, but I mean, we'd probably have to get into modifying the existing structure as well.
Of the posts?
Yes, the width.
The reason I, you know, well, sometimes, like with fences, you know? We talk about a four-foot fence, but, or a three-and-a-half-foot fence, the fences come four and six and then people tell us it's gonna cost the, you're going from what's regularly available to what needs to be custom-made and the price goes way up. So have you talked to a sign person? Is this what they say is gonna work on what you've got there or is this just...
How this arrived is Aaron's rental was next door to us. They had an existing monument that they've, in the past, went for variances and had. They originally planned on moving it. After speaking with me and the landlord and whatnot, we decided that if we can incorporate all the tenants into one, that it would be a better idea and we wanted to look into that. So how the sign derived was not just for the one, we're trying to incorporate all eight tenants that we have onto one sign and give them all equal space on the sign. So...
I guess, like, I'm not sure you answered it. My question was, have you talked to a sign person or a sign company about, and have they told you, using existing materials and normal dimensions and stuff like this, this is what would work, so that if you went to something smaller, it's gonna shoot the cost way up because now you're, everything's custom?
I'm not sure it was a cost issue as much as leaving enough space for each tenant. And, and the width, we could not control because the two pillars are in there. So if you look at the structure, we're just going right along with them. As far as the height, I'm sure we could, you know, have it as small as we wanted per se, or needed to be, but it wouldn't have room for all the tenants. It would leave the spaces too small to list them, in, in the sign company's opinion.
And the planning board, which approved this last month, looked at this for a lot of the similar things, questions you're asking and approved it.
They approved the size of the sign?
They approved, no, you guys have to approve the, the variance for the size, but they said barring your approval on the excess size from a design perspective, because that's the role they have to play in this process, they looked at it and said aesthetically and how it looks, it wasn't, it wasn't a problem for them. It was six.
Our plaza is unique too to the neighborhood. We're quite a bit down, the sign itself is about 30 feet from the road and the plaza itself sits down as opposed to level with the road.
It's true, across the street as well. The lowest...
Not quite as much, but yes, the sign itself is up towards the road more.
Right.
But the plaza, yes, goes down, so it makes it harder on the tenants' visibility for that. So we wouldn't be obstructing any...
The lowest panel, the lowest run, the lowest panel sign, how high is that gonna be off the ground? There's nothing, nothing that determines the height other than a picture to the left.
I believe we answered that in the planning board. I'm not sure if they have records. I believe it was four foot from the ground. And underneath this sign is a barrier. I don't know what you would call it, but basically it's in a planter box, so you cannot basically go underneath it. It's, it's surrounded with a barrier.
So it's gonna be four feet?
From the ground.
From the ground. I, I just worry about somebody driving around on one side of it and...
Well, that's what I'm saying. It's physically surrounded by a wooden planter box that exceeds the width of the sign. So they, they would, if you drove by it, in other words, you'd hit the planter box before you would hit the sign.
I'm just thinking of two cars coming around it on opposite sides, they don't see each other because they can't see through the sign at that low point.
He's not talking about cars hitting the sign, he's talking about cars hitting each other because they can't see each other through the sign.
It'll be open on the bottom.
And that did come up, sir. It came up at the planning board meeting and it was one of the reasons, they, they felt comfortable with it because of the way it was set back and the way that it was designed, that it wouldn't come low enough to where it would impact, would impact that. But that did, that was, I just want you to know that was discussed as part of their approval too.
And there's only one way of traffic on the sign too, to the right of the sign per se, or I guess you'd say to the north of the sign is all parking spots. So it's one lane of traffic that would be going, driving past the sign.
This, the, you got two pictures of the sign to the left, the old picture with the address and then the one above it with the new signs where Aaron's is listed at the top, in the top panel. The width of the sign, the lower one, falls in between the two columns. And the upper sign, the Aaron's, the actual letters of the Aaron's words are in between the two columns and then a lot of dark blue overhangs the, both columns on the right and the left. on the right and the left. If the sign were, if we were to approve it and, and cut back the square footage of that sign, to limit them, limit the actual signage to go to the outside of the columns, would it be a problem for you?
I'm not sure about for mounting, or why they decided to overlay it, I'm pretty sure it has to also do with securing the sign to the existing poles.
Again, I would think they could mount it the same way, I mean, it, it's, you're, you're going to be overhanging it the width of the, the actual pole itself, but I, I think you would, you'd, you'd cut back the square footage quite a bit, and still have a handsome sign without it making that wide, that wide of a look, because it does look pretty big. Would it be a problem if we approve it that way?
I, I would say is, I'd have to check with the sign company and see if that alters anything on their end.
The, the sign company, is that the ID associates out of Alabama?
Yes, actually, this is happening too, just for the record too, it's on, Aaron's is paying for this, providing the capital for this, so they've directly worked this with the, the sign company, and obviously just asked for our approvals and whatnot, but.
Well, I mean, I, I would have a tendency to go along with the sign if it was brought in on both sides, just so it, it just looks monstrous the way it is.
Would it be possible to find out from the sign company whether or not the-
I, I think so.
-panels could be mounted, I think what Mr. LaPerry is looking at is mounting, instead, instead of having them extend beyond the poles, can they be mounted, they could fill in solid between the poles?
Right. To the best of my recollection, it was something to do with how they're creating the sign and why they wanted it overlay, I, I have a little bit better of a picture that maybe you want to look at, that I could-
Sure.
Describe it to you there. The mounting on the bottom here, so, see how it kind of, so I think it would go over and shine like six inches.
Yeah, it's probably not to scale.
Yeah, again, I, I, I just- Right, I mean, I, you know, it's, I just think it, uh-
Structural thing or a pricing thing that this was a standard size, or I, I have to look into that.
That, that would be helpful to know that, I assume that you're back, so you found out the answer, right?
I am, I'm getting a workout tonight.
There you go.
So the one sign, this is at 999 East Ridge Road, Depot Plaza, one 10-foot by 17-foot by 23-foot high, 170 square feet, was the one main sign at Depot Plaza. Freestanding sign, correct me if I'm wrong, limit is 32, correct? No, 60. Yeah, so they would have gotten, plus, there's another additional sign on site, measuring 42 square feet, and then also four ground directional signs with logo, so they count toward, so a total of 202 square feet.
But the one large sign, 170 square feet?
Yes, 23 feet high.
All right, thanks.
You're welcome.
And thanks for running to get that.
Anytime.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in favor of this, I'm sorry, did you have anything else you wanted to say? No, okay, I didn't think so, but I wanted to be sure. Is there anyone here who wished to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here who wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about this application? Seeing none, we will close the hearing with respect to that matter, and take up our last case on the March agenda.
Case number ZB 1503-2, upon the matter of request by Kathleen Lazaro for an area variance to construct an addition with less than required front setback on premises 60 Brower Road in an R2 residential district.
My name is Kathleen Lazaro, I live at 60 Brower Road, which is a corner lot-
You could raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do swear, all right, okay. My 60 Brower Road is a corner lot with two fronts, one facing Brower Road and one front facing Angela's Drive, I'm requesting an area variance to extend my kitchen along the front corner of Angela's Drive for an area of 12 feet by 12 feet, for, for the purpose of having more room for family meals in family gatherings.
Oh, just, a, the applicants provided us with a sheet with signatures from-
The surrounding neighbors.
President at 26 Angela's Drive, whose name I can't decipher, Mr. Anderson at 9 Angela's Drive, and Mrs. Anderson, or Ms. Anderson, I should say, at 9 Angela's Drive, and a Terry and Linda Kurtz at 16 Angela's Drive, apparently indicating that they're okay with that. This, correct me if I'm wrong, this corner lot, the, technically, the front of it, for variance purposes, is Angela's Drive, right? So if, which is the shortest distance across, although the house is used and faces Brower Road, which is the longer side, so if it was, if it was a side variance, or if it's a side setback issue, what would the requirement be? Wouldn't it, isn't it 10% of the-
10% of the width of the lot-
Right.
Would be the setback for the side yard on a, a non-corner lot.
So if it was the, if it was fronted on the 95-foot, that would require a-
9.5.
9.5, 9.5-foot side setback, right?
Correct.
What you're looking for is 18-foot-
That's correct.
So you can go 12-foot closer to Angela's Drive.
Correct.
Anyone have any questions or comments for the applicant?
The house faces Brower, but the, but the front of the house is on Angela's.
For zoning purposes.
Purposes of, of this variance.
The legal front, as it's defined in the code.
I guess I, I need to hear the numbers once again, this required setback, as it now exists, is for not, on that corner, is what?
30 feet.
30 feet, because it's a front setback.
Because it's a front setback, and she wants to put an 18-foot addition on.
12-foot.
12-foot.
Exactly right. 12-foot addition on, leaving 18 feet.
Right.
That's where I got the 18 from.
And if it were a side setback, it would be 9.5 feet. If the front of the house was facing Brower Road and the ordinance looked at it as the front of the house, then the side setback, she wouldn't need a variance for it, because it's the front-
I consider the front, excuse me, I consider the front to be Brower Road, and then there's a side door, but because it's a corner lot, the town considers it two fronts.
Right, the town, well, the, no, the town has one front, and that's Angela's Drive, even though your address is Brower Road-
Oh, really?
Even though your driveway is Brower Road, even though the front door is Brower Road, the town says the shorter width, or narrower-
The narrower of the two.
Is the front, so Angela's Drive is the front, and that's why it's a front setback.
Okay.
And therein lies the issue, because corner lots do that all the time.
Could you appeal that to the planning board?
At least it's too late, should have been part of the site plan review.
You missed your calling. The only question-
That one would be, I think that would be you guys.
The question I have is the fact that the front setback of the, of Angela's Road, if you stand at the corner of her house and you look down, down Angela's Road, her east, her west side of the house is perfectly lined up with all the setbacks going all the way down Angela's Road. Even though this house faces Brower Road, is it going to look funny for the rest of the houses on Angela's Road that there's a 12-foot addition out in the front yards? I, I guess I will determine whether any neighbors complain about it, but it will, even though it's a nice-looking house and it'll probably be a cute addition, it might be an awkward spot on that corner, and, and the fact that it's sticking so far forward from the other houses along Angela's Road.
I'm, I'm going to assume that the kitchen is at the southeast corner of the property now?
Yes, and it's a split, and there's really no other place to-
Add on?
Correct.
And, so unless you relocated the kitchen to another part of the house, which would involve a considerable amount of work, the only way to expand the kitchen is to go out towards Angela's Drive?
Correct.
And it's hard to tell in the wintertime, but it looked like you have some landscaping around your house, some shrubs and stuff in the front and on the long side, are you going to do that with an addition too?
I don't have any landscaping in the front on Brower, I have a couple of maple trees. On the side, I just have two maple trees and a couple small bushes on the one side.
You put some bushes in front of this too?
Could I?
Yeah.
Yes.
That'll help soften that-
Right.
-impact a little, I think. We won't require it, because we don't generally do that, but it's a suggestion. Any other questions or comments? Anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here to speak in opposition to the application? And there doesn't appear to be anybody here who wishes to chat with us about it, so we will close the hearing with respect to this case, we will take a 13-minute recess and we'll reconvene at 8:55.
The folks from 1220 East Ridge Road are here. The gentleman from Georgetown Plaza is not here. And the woman from 60 Brower is here. So, the first item that we would be taking up to deliberate on would be the 1027 Thomas Avenue matter. This, I believe, is a type-two action for seeker purposes.
That's correct.
And I am not participating in the deliberation. Does someone wish to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion that we deny the appeal on the grounds that there has been no evidence or argument put forth by the applicant to suggest that the code enforcement officer did not perform his function adequately and that the interpretation of Section 235.43 does not suggest that the code enforcement officer did not fulfill his duty.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? And I abstain. So, the motion carries. Five votes in favor, no opposed, one abstention, and one member absent. Next item is 1220 East Ridge Road. These are...do we have to do a separate sheet for each of the five variances? Or can we do them all together? Why don't we start out by trying to see if we can do them all together?
I think that's...in the past, you've asked for a motion to try and do them all together. If not, you could do them individually.
And before we do the motions, this is an...there should be a better term than uncoordinated review, but it's an uncoordinated application process, so we have to do the short environment assessment form, which has been provided to us. And it has been suggested that we make a determination that this will not have a significant environmental impact, that it will not create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations, that it will not result in the change in the use or intensity of use of the land, that it will not impair the character or quality of the existing community, that it will not have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area, that it will not result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway, that it will not cause an increase in the use of energy, and that it fails to incorporate reasonably...no, it will not cause an increase in the use of energy, and it does not fail to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities, it will not negatively impact existing public-private water supplies or public-private wastewater treatment utilities, it will not impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources, it will not result in an adverse change to natural resources such as wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, or fauna, it will not result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems, and it will not create a hazard to environmental resources or human health. So, I would move that we make that determination as suggested by the applicant. Is there a second for that?
I would second that, but with the...my understanding is that there might be some letters that are coming from the county, that the county might have made some determinations about the drainage. I would make the determination, or I would second the motion. However, if the county were to issue a letter saying that there was an issue with the drainage or the runoff, that we can't find that there is no adverse environmental impact.
Well, I think all my motion is doing is it's saying from what's in front of us now, which isn't...doesn't include anything from the county saying otherwise yet, that it would appear that way. So, if the county issues a letter that says otherwise, then we would need to revisit this.
If all we're saying is that it doesn't appear that way, then I second that.
Doesn't appear that way now.
I second that motion.
Any discussion?
Are we doing this on seven variances at once, then?
No, this is the seeker.
It's the seeker? Okay.
But for all of them, yes.
So, all those in...
The seeker, sorry.
Yeah, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, six votes in favor, and no opposed, and one member is absent. Then we're going to try and do the...hmm? Oh. I think that's what it is, yeah.
Correct.
After an uncoordinated review. I think there's five variances, not seven. The variances that we have in front of us is a front setback variance from 38.6, which is existing, to 21.1, but the required is 60. The lot depth requires a minimum lot depth of 200 feet. It's only 116 feet, 88 inches now. Now that I look at that, that doesn't make sense either. I'm going to assume it's eight inches, since a foot is 12, 88 inches...oh, 88 hundredths of an inch. Oh, okay. Probably closer to 11, then. Anyway, that's...and 200 feet to 116.88. And then a lot area variance to the existing 12,007 square feet from the required 20,000. A rear yard setback, which is...they're proposing 38.3. The required is 60, and existing is 8.3. And the maximum pervious area to 86 percent from the maximum of 80. Those are the five.
And then also the parking for it being not on an adjacent lot.
Well, I thought the parking was in front of the town board.
No, the parking is...it's not a relief from the spaces needed. They accomplish that...they meet that threshold. The relief from the code is because when you have parking that is not on the actual site, the code states that it is...needs to be on a contiguous lot. This is not. And then the actual signing of the lease is subject to town board approval. So, that's to make sure that...
So, we have to have...we have to approve them having parking spaces somewhere non-contiguous.
Correct.
And then the town. Okay. I didn't...that's why I was trying to clarify earlier. So, there are six variances that are needed, not five.
Correct, sir.
So, is there a consensus among the board? Can we do these all together, or do we wish to do them individually?
The other signs, is that got to go in there too? Because that's over to number seven.
They withdrew the sign.
The sign is...the pylon sign's withdrawn.
The pylon sign only, wasn't it? Was that just a big sign?
Yep, the pylon sign is withdrawn.
But underneath it, direction and menu boards...
Those are not...
They're not in there?
They're not in there.
So, can we do the six together?
Yes.
All right. Does someone wish to make an application...or a motion with respect to the six variances?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion that we approve this application, not because I can walk there for my house, but I do believe that this establishment would be an enhancement to the area business-wise and also for the residents of the...because it is a business, a busy business intersection, there'll be no change to the character of the neighborhood. There are not alternatives...there are no alternatives...let me try that again. There are no alternatives that would not require a variance. Hence, we have six. The substantiality of the request is something to be concerned about, but we've discussed it. It's been researched, homework has been done, and all the negatives seem to be under control and answerable. There will be no physical or environmental conditions changed in this neighborhood. That's been studied, too. And is it self-created? Not really, because the lot size is what it is. And I think they're going to make the best of it.
I'll second.
Before I move that.
I'll second. And just for the...as an observation, this is exactly the kind of lot that they talked to us about in law school, where the zoning restrictions, when you measure it, what they are from the board, will show you that you can't build anything on the property, which is what gave rise to the whole concept of variances from zoning to begin with. So, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, six votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, one member. Mr. Hammond continues to be absent. I think he thought he was going to be in a warmer climate. I know somebody who recently left Myrtle Beach who said it was 29 when they left, so...
It's a heat wave.
Yeah. The next applicant who's present is Ms. Lazaro from 60 Brower Road. This is a type-two action for seeker purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application? Seeing none, I'll make a motion. I would move that we approve the variance. The addition will have some change to the neighborhood character by placing her house slightly out of line, well, 12 feet out of line, with the other houses that are on her side of the street from...on the Angeles Drive side. However, there would be no other reasonable place that she could expand her house to accommodate the desired enhancement of the kitchen without undertaking a major alteration of the floor plan of the house and moving the kitchen to a different part of the house. And the fact that the addition will jut out a little from the house is something that can be softened in terms of the impact, and I would submit that the benefit of having the additional space that the...in the kitchen and the reasons for the applicant wishing to enhance the property are not outweigh the...any detriment to the neighborhood. And the fact that the neighbors who are immediately adjacent to the house on Angeles Drive have all indicated that they believe that this would be a nice addition to the neighborhood, I think it tests to the fact that the benefit outweighs any detriment to the neighborhood. There really isn't an alternative that would not require a variance. The request is not substantial when one looks at the orientation of the house in relation to Brower Road. It would meet the side setback. It's because of the way the town treats corner lots that it makes it a somewhat of a substantial request, but it's 12 feet of 30, so it's...ultimately, it's leaving 60 percent of the existing setback in place. It will not have a negative impact on physical or environmental conditions, and it is not a self-created hardship any more than anyone else who wishes to improve property that they've bought that's already been built on a corner lot in a manner that doesn't necessarily...easily allow for expansion under the zoning code.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Actually, I was just going to mention that this is one of those situations where, like Mr. LaPerry said, it's going to stick out a little bit from the rest of the street. And that's true, but if you live on the street, you'll notice it, but if you move into the street later, you probably won't even notice it. That's why I'm going to support this. I think it's a good idea.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have one member absent. Motion carries, six in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, one member remains absent. Going back to the top of the agenda, we have the application with respect to 151 Hartsdale Road. This is a type-two action for seeker purposes. I'll be the bad guy and make the motion that we deny the variance request. Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second it.
Any discussion or comments from the board? All those in favor of the motion to deny the variance say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, six...oh, any abstentions? Six votes in favor, no abstentions, no opposed. And the last item is pertaining to 1,000 East Ridge Road. This is the sign for the Georgetown variance. This is a type-two action for seeker purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I'd like to make the motion with some adjustment to the overall square footage to be dialed back from 94...194 square feet down to approximately 170 square feet, which, doing my quick calculation, the second portion of the sign where the panels are going to be the...one, two, three, four, five, six, seven panels are going to be put into place. If those panels are allowed to be only eight foot wide from the 10-foot width that they had shown on the paper, it would cut back about 24 square foot of signage, which would make it similar to the sign across the street, so about 170 square foot of signage to be allowed. So, I think we should approve that size of a sign, and I believe it will affect the character of the neighborhood, but I'm trying to keep it minimal. It is a retail area, so I am sensitive to the fact that business needs a good signage. I don't think it'll hurt the environment impact. It is a self-created issue because they want to do a new sign, but I believe allowing them to have a sign is the right thing, just not making it as big as they want is a little better-looking.
So, did I understand it that the panels would be no more than eight feet wide?
The panels will be no more than eight feet wide mounted.
Mounted between the poles as opposed to extending beyond them?
They...in my calculation, they'll be equal to both the right and left pole. So, they'll...yeah, they'll...
They won't extend beyond the pole.
They won't extend...right now, they're extending beyond the pole about a foot on both sides, so it should just...and the gentleman had questioned the mounting method, and he thought that that might have had a reason why it was that wide, but if he looks at his own forms here, it says mounting method to be determined. So, I'm sure they can customize it any way they need to to make it fit.
So, what I have is the motion is to approve the variance with the conditions that it would be approximately 170 square feet, with the panels to be a maximum of eight feet wide, and not to extend beyond the existing poles.
Yes.
Is there a second?
I would second it, but I have a question first, and that is the gentleman presenting was willing to work with us on this, but he wasn't sure about the sign maker people. I think he was going to check with them to find out if there was...if this was going to change...I don't know what, the structure itself, does it really matter? And if we...and if they say, oh, yeah, we've got to have that over...hanging over the edge because...and we haven't approved that part of it, is that going to...
I think they can come back...they could come back to clarify that with us without having to make a new application, right?
Just knowing what I know from signage, this is...they're basic panels, that they can be made to fit any size, so I don't think he's going to have an issue.
I just thought that might be a possibility. But I do second the motion.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. Mr. Hammond continues to remain absent. Concludes the cases that are on our agenda, along with the materials for the meeting we received, drafts of minutes for our November meeting, our December meeting, and our January meeting. With respect to the December and November meeting, all of the members of the board were present at both of those meetings. Mr. Vignette is no longer a member of the board, and we have Mr. Evans, who wasn't a part of the board at that time. So, there's five of us, and we need four votes to approve the minutes. So, I would move...did everyone have a chance to review the minutes?
Yes, sir.
All right. So, I would move that we approve the minutes for the meetings of November 3 and December 1. Is there a second? Mr. Polino, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, five votes in favor, no opposed, and one absent. At the January 5 meeting, all of those who are present tonight were present then, so did everyone have a chance to review those minutes? I would move that we approve the minutes of the January 5, 2015, meeting. Is there a second?
Seconds.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five votes in favor, no opposed. That concludes our business, I believe, tonight, and we are adjourned.